All right. It is six o'clock. Monday. February twenty first. Regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council, hearing via Zoom. Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Here.
Joseph Jones. Michael Libby.
Here.
Lauren Campbell. And Teresa harms, I understand it's gonna be about five minutes. And I don't see Joseph either.
Well, we have Susan, we have Lauren, we have Michael, we have a quorum.
Yeah, we do have a quorum.
All right, please join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two, approval of the agenda, motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
And Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Item three, public forum. This is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business. Other than those listed on the agenda, no action may be taken. If you have a comment, please speak up. Raise your hand. And we will unmute you when you can speak. It looks like there is a comment from or a Matthew Johnston. Mr. Johnston. Does he need to be unmuted or can you unmute himself Travis?
Let me see, I can. I, let's see now. There he is.
Can he unmute himself or?
Yeah, I think I've asked him to unmute.
Okay, Mr. Johnston, if you can hear us, you have your hand raised. We just need you to unmute yourself so you can you can address the council, please. I cannot unmute myself, he chats, okay? Well, that is a.
Uh, Mr. Johnson.
Clicked on ask unmute. Mr. Lindsay, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, is it my time to address the council?
Hang on just one second. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lindsay also had a comment, but he's able to unmute, so I'm not real sure why Mr. Johnson cannot. Okay, all right, um. Mr. Johnston, there is a note that indicates the host is now allowing to unmute themselves. Travis, if you could continue to see if you can just make sure he can unmute. Mr. Lindsay, as you are present and as you can unmute yourself, please, first off, what's your address?
Oh, my, I just moved here. It is on Harvey Street, two thirteen Harvey Street.
Harvey Street?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and Grimes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, go ahead.
Okay, so this is, this is the problem, guys. Here in this council, we're in a predominantly white area, and I feel like we need to be proactive in our representation of different cultures. In a place like Iowa, we're going to be centrally exclusive from other cultures coming here because they don't feel like they're culturally represented. So I feel like we should be proactive in representing like the people that are most important to us, like a person we lost this past year was Kobe Bryant. Kobe Bryant was one of the greatest basketball players of all time.
Mr. Lindsay, if I can interrupt you. You are resident of Grimes and you are addressing the um, city council of Windsor Heights.
I understand that. I'm trying to do a big campaign. I'm a lobbyist. I speak in front of lots of different councils.
Okay.
I work, I work, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Work in Windsor Heights. I don't have to live in Windsor Heights if I work in Windsor Heights, so. This is what I think about when I think about Kobe Bryant. I think about how much he would have liked the vaccine. Why? Because the vaccine is the game winning. The Kobe Bryant always took the game winning shot. That was what was so special about Kobe Bryant. So I think we really need to come up with creative ways so we can be more exclusive to people of different cultures. Instead of just being like a predominantly white council, we have a predominantly white city. Uh, I, I think during the Black Lives Matter protests, I don't think that, um, honestly, I don't think Windsor Heights showed enough representation of what was going on, because if you looked at city, you've looked at San Francisco, that they were on fire. Uh, you look at New York, that was on fire. I don't feel like Windsor Heights was putting out those metaphorical fires. And I think like, you know, if we could erect something like something in honor of George Floyd, or maybe something that would actually be proactive so other cultures can come in and feel like they're a home, instead of feeling like a foreign person in a different country. Because I'll be honest, listen, ever since my wife left me, I've had a lot of trouble coping. I've had a lot of, uh, you know, social anxiety. I haven't been able to go out because I'm embarrassed. She left me for a nineteen year old personal trainer. And so now she's on Facebook, posting with the guy all the time at the same resort in Cancun that we went to on our honeymoon. So what I'm trying to do is I don't want to have a meaningless life. I've already had a lot of my hopes and joys taken away from me by a nineteen year old bodybuilder that is doing stuff to my wife that I never even got to do supposedly, and now they're on websites where I've having mutual friends.
Yeah, we're gonna head and end, Mr. Lindsay.
No, here, but well, let me just finish when I'm.
No. I appreciate your comments, but, um.
I don't believe that was.
It would appear that you were, you were not being serious. If you would like to be serious, um, you, you are more than welcome to submit something to the city council via the website. I appreciate your comments. Um, Travis, is there anybody else?
I'm, I actually made, I can't get Mr. Johnson. I can't get him to come unmuted, so.
Hi.
Can you hear me? Can you hear us? Okay, awesome.
I was just gonna make a statement. You know, we need to take this stuff seriously. So when somebody's coming on here, making a mockery of these meetings, um, just making up these false stories, trying to be funny, talking about their wives, and it's nonsense, because we put so much money and time into this council. So it's like a slap in the face, because my dad donated so much money to this city!
I put both of them back in the waiting room, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we're not going to be allowing anyone in that we don't recognize. Looks like we're getting spammed.
Shall we move to the consent agenda?
It looks like we lost the mayor.
Lost the mayor, yeah.
Oh, well, that's thanks. Did you put him in the waiting room too?
I did not.
When did you, when did you and Joseph, Teresa, when did you get on?
Um, at the end of the first section.
Okay.
Got it.
I'm just having you.
On prior to the excitement, so I got.
I'm gonna put that you both arrived at six oh eight PM, if that's okay, or six oh five.
Let's go with six oh.
Sure.
Six oh five, is that good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Susan, since, do you want to just take over until the mayor comes back?
I would love to. Um, so I guess we are moving on now to consent agenda. For consent agenda, any item on the consent agenda may be removed for a separate consideration.
I'm moving.
Hang on just a second, Travis. I need you to take Mr. Johnson off of the co-host, so I can allow the mayor back in the meeting.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, he is removed.
So I think Joseph approved the consent agenda. Did we have a second?
Second.
Not.
Then I'll move to, um, move forward with the consent agenda.
Okay. I would like to, um, remove E, or at least acknowledge Ms. King's presence here. Um, I see that she's on this lovely, interesting evening, so I just want to thank her for being on and um, just kind of would like to, to welcome her and give her the chance to say anything if she'd like to, since it looks like we're going to approve her to the Greater Des Moines Sister Cities Commission.
I have nothing to say.
Excellent. Then we can.
Just a moment. Ricky, I just wanted to say congratulations and welcome to the sister cities. I think you'll do a fabulous job, and so I do appreciate your putting your name out there as a contender, so thanks.
Thank you.
So I have a motion second on the consent agenda.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Okay, now we are moving on to new business. Um, consideration of the second reading of ordinance number twenty two zero two in ordinance amending chapter fifty five of the code of ordnances for the city of Windsor Heights related to animal trapping.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Travis, was there any feedback or did you hear anything after the, after it was brought up at our last council meeting?
No, I have not heard anything, either through email or phone calls, so.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Consideration of waiving the third and final reading of ordinance number twenty two dash zero two in ordinance amending chapter fifty five of the code of ordinances for the city of Windsor Heights related to animal trapping and move to adopt.
So move.
Move to. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Uh, consideration of the second reading of ordinance number twenty two dash zero three in ordinance amending chapter forty of the code of ordinances for the city of Windsor Heights related to animal trapping.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Have you heard anything, Travis?
No.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Consideration of waiving the third and final reading of ordinance number twenty two dash zero three in ordinance amending chapter forty of the code of ordinances for the city of Windsor Heights related to animal trapping and move to adopt.
So move.
Any discussion or going right to roll call?
Roll call.
Well, Susan, Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Consideration of resolution number twenty or two zero zero two, let me start that again. Consideration of resolution number twenty twenty two dash thirteen, a resolution setting time and place for a public hearing for the purpose of considering the maximum tax dollars for certain levies for the city's proposed fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Roll call. We're just setting.
Just making sure. Roll call.
Sure, Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Consideration of resolution number twenty twenty two dash fourteen, a resolution setting time and place for a public hearing for a site plan review for Clive Learning Academy.
Move to approve.
Second.
We'll go roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Consideration of resolution number twenty twenty two dash fifteen, a resolution setting time and place for a public hearing to vacate easements for the Aldi project.
Don't move.
Okay.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Consideration of resolution number twenty twenty two dash sixteen, a resolution setting time and place for a public hearing for a site plan review for the Aldi project.
Come on.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa harms.
Yes.
Consideration of governing body rules of procedure.
I'll move that. So we can have discussion. Hello, Mr. Mayor.
I can't say I've ever been kicked out of my own meeting before, but I suppose there's a first time for everything. All right, I'm sorry, you were, you're on the rules of procedure.
Now I'll move to, uh, open discussion.
Is there a second or do you need a second still, Travis?
I, I know, we kind of, we were doing this last meeting where we were doing like motions to open discussion. I was wondering from Aaron, um, instead of us then going back to rescind those motions, if it's okay, just do a motion to approve and a second, then discuss and then vote, or how does the council want to proceed?
I'll amend my motion just to approve.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I definitely would like a motion and a second before discussion.
Okay. So I have not recorded a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Am I taking over now, Susan?
Well, right ahead, that was kind of thrown at me. That was a curve ball in my direction.
Yes, me too. Um, I had re- um, wrote these in accordance with the suggestions of council. Susan, I believe you'd also emailed me maybe a week or two prior. Um, and this wasn't actually included on the first submission, but it actually had to do with standards of procedure via Zoom, uh, as it turns out, so. I, uh, I submitted these, um, hopefully they are, they, uh, the edits are all appropriate as to what council suggested and are willing to approve them. Uh, is there any further discussion or any discussion at all?
Guess when I looked through, I didn't see the Zoom one. Can you just tell me where that, what I missed? Oh, is that on citizen participation seven?
Yes, it just basically says, you know, aforementioned standards apply to, especially when it comes to talking and having your time cut short. Uh, so, so yes. That is that, that's what that refers to.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
If you are voting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was, yes, yes, I, yes, I said yes.
Uh, Jay, consideration of tentative agreement between the city of Windsor Heights and AFSMI Council sixty one. Motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Um, Dennis, do you have, is this yours or anyone speaking on this?
Aaron's, Aaron's on the call to substituting for Matt, who headed up the negotiating team, but, uh, uh, the crux of the matter is this is different than a negotiating, um, collective bargaining agreement with public safety entities. Uh, Iowa law requires that the city negotiate and bargain for wages only. And so that's what we focused on with this negotiating session with the ASME group. And you can see on page. Let me get to that section real quick. Page fifty nine of your packet. At the very top, it says wage rate, and we are recommending, we have, we have agreement, tentative agreement with ASME for a first year wage increase of four percent. This is effective July first, twenty twenty two, when our new budget year kicks in. The second year wage increase of three point five percent and the third year of this agreement at three percent. Uh, one note about the first year, the, um, Public Works employees did not get a wage increase during the current fiscal year because they had, um, certified their union and they were in the process of beginning and negotiating and a first offer for us, so they did not have wage increases included in the current year budget. So we took that into account when we, um, are recommending agreement on a four percent bump starting January, July first. Um, Aaron, please jump in if you have any more details that you can provide about, um, negotiating this contract or answer the questions that any of council members might have.
I have a quick question. In that first sentence, we talk about a three percent across the board increase, and then in parentheses, we have four percent.
Yes.
Yeah, ASME sent us the wrong documents. And so we republished the correct documents when we received those. I think Travis sent those out either Friday late.
We all froze them.
Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing that Matt had asked me to relate to the council was that, that these figures are very consistent to what we've been seeing in our other, uh, bargaining units, so. Um, from that perspective, he's very comfortable with the, the rate increases that are suggested here.
Other discussion on council. Okay. Uh, hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Lauren Campbell.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
Travis, did you record Michael's vote? I think he was having some.
Yeah, I will, I will reach out and make sure that he was a yes on it.
It looks like he's gone now.
Yeah, he was freezing before.
Okay, he's back on Michael. Are you, is your connection back good? Okay, what was your vote on the, um, the agreement? You're muted.
Hi.
Item K, consideration or consider recommendation of approval to ICAP for a proposed settlement of the Willett's lawsuit. Motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, Dennis or Aaron?
Um, this one actually came to me for, I just actually, I took the call from, from the ICAP attorney. I remember we had a brief closed session about this. Um, their property, um, they were coming to the city because they thought that the log jam that happened upstream from them caused damage to their home. ICAP determined that that wasn't, um, the case, and this is a settlement offer that's down from the original figure that they wanted. So ICAP is just seeking our approval for that settlement offer, and I just kind of briefly ran that past Aaron, so I don't know if she has anything that she wants to add to that or not.
Yeah, the only thing, I have not been involved in this litigation. Um, I know that the original offer was somewhere in the sixty thousand dollar range, and so they've come down significantly. Um, you, we just always want to advise the council that if you go against what ICAP is recommending, that um, from there on out, then costs would come to the city as opposed to insurance, so, um, in this case, we would recommend approval.
Any other discussion on council? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa harms.
Yes.
All right. Uh, item six, reports. Ms. harms.
Um, I have nothing, um, I, I believe I have nothing to report, um, tonight, but just a quick question. Um, we had four public hearing, um, agenda items, and in the past, we've put those under the consent agenda is, I'm just curious if that's something that we would want to do in the future.
I am willing to do that. Um, I just wasn't sure if, because it was due to the max levy in, in prior councils, there's been questions even when we set the public hearing, so if that's the direction that the council wishes to go, I will place those public hearing resolutions on the consent agenda.
Either way, I just thought it was, it was just different than how we've done it in the past, so just curious, thanks.
Ms. Campbell.
Um, the Special Events Committee, um, met again this morning and, uh, working on, um, our calendar for the year. I'll let Susan talk about movies that we've got planned and the volunteer, we, um, uh, donations and the volunteer stuff that we'll have for that, but, uh, we're looking at, uh, I should say, we're considering moving away from a July third or July fourth centered event for parade fireworks and live music and, um, developing a fall festival. Um, and so at the next council meeting, I'll have more information for council to review, um, with some proposed budget. Um, what the community involvement would need to look like, um, but so everyone knows that the date that we found that is available, where the park is available, uh, it's the week after Beverdale Fall Fest, um, and uh, there's not, the, the only conflict that we can find on, uh, metro calendars is, um, Oktoberfest downtown, so we would, the goal being to attract, um, people from outside of Windsor Heights to come celebrate with us, so more information, um, for our next council meeting. Um, and we'll have everything pulled together.
Lauren, I have a question.
Yeah.
So does that mean, so I may have missed that. Does that mean that, um, the foundation is on their own for nights in the heights?
Um, so, uh, think of the July third, fourth, a little bit separate from nights in the heights, even though that, that's all, you know, the music down the park, right? So the foundation would also, would be doing, uh, would not be doing something July third, fourth, the park, it would then be in the fall, so there would still be the live music from the foundation, fireworks, um, so there would not be a July third slash fourth event down at the park.
So, let me ask that again, so I just heard, so there's, there are no fireworks, correct?
There would be fireworks in the fall instead of July.
In the fall.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, all right. The reason I ask is that my bride puts together the, uh, all the acts for that and.
Right, right. Yeah, so, and. Right, right. Yeah. So and, and don't forget that the foundation's on the Special Events Committee. So they're, they're in the loop and that's why we want this to be on the, on our next council agenda to finalize those plans so that the foundation and Georgie can lock down all the dates and so forth.
All right. Well, okay. So I will advise Ms. Georgie. Thank you.
Okay.
Michael, Mr. Libby. Mr. Love, do you have anything to report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I was, thank you. Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to say thanks to so many people in staff. Rochelle and I had a two hour meeting relative to the budget and I certainly did appreciate that Dalton responded quickly to a concern that a resident had and I appreciated that. Chief McCluskey, thank you for for fixing a rookie mistake that I did relative to my email. And Travis, for all the information and help, it's really been beneficial. I had my second coffee with council back in January. I did that opportunity and nobody came by to chat about city or city business. And then in February, just a week ago, I had five people stop in to chat about their concerns or their questions relative to city and had a lot of comments positively about the university avenue project and the reconstruction of that. Had some questions and support about the Aldi project. There was a question about some retaining ponds and some pumps and Dalton and I talked about that a bit. Also, you know, it's all together a positive experience anytime that you can put yourself out there and sit for a couple of hours and just listen to. At this time, not necessarily concerns, but some, some real energetic positive attitudes, even from people that were from outside the city of Windsor Heights. We have our Economic Development Committee coming up. And I gotta tell you, Mayor, every time that I see Weekend Update come through on Friday, I think of Colin Jost and Michael Che. And so that's, that's kind of fun. I appreciate it.
Mr. Jones.
I got nothing. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Skiris.
I was able to do a ride along with the police on the thirteenth. It was nice to kind of go out there and see. I rode with Detective Johnson, who was out on the streets that weekend. The Officer Miller was also working, but they're not out there pulling cars over just to give them tickets, but rather inform the drivers of things such as their headlights not being on, their rear brake light is out and to watch your speed. Detective Johnson was able to educate the drivers and even explain to one driver how to turn her headlights on since she just bought the car. I wish that these types of actions are what the public get to hear about versus someone in nineteen seventy-six was pulled over for going one mile per hour over the speed limit. Metro Waste Meeting was canceled for the month. Today, we had a Special Events Committee meeting. We have a tentative calendar for the special events that we are firming up and then we will get that out to council. And as Lauren said, we discussed the possible fall festival option versus the July fourth option and had the foundation and the chambers input on that. The dates and movies have been decided for movies in the park. And we have the dates reserved at the Community Event Center so that we have the option if the movie needs to be moved inside. Mayor Jones has agreed to head up the garage sale event that will happen in, on May fourteenth. Then Spring Cleanup or Junk Days, however you want to think of it, will be next, will be the next week, May twenty-first. Also, I'd like to point out, this does not fall on a holiday weekend. So we are not going to be having the issues that we did the last time. I'm pretty excited for this year's special events and I'm super happy that we are starting to plan this early for our events. There, if council could share the events for not only the city, but also for the foundation and chamber on your own Facebook pages, that helps get the events out there to be seen by more residents. Then before Whitney left, she made a tab on the city's webpage where a person can go to fill out a form to volunteer. I see that we all received our first volunteer application today and that's very exciting for us. I made my own social media post about the volunteering on my city council page. I know that Lauren shared it on her council page. So if anyone else wants to steal it, feel free to. So we can get the word out there as we would love to have volunteers. And that's all on me.
Thank you, Ms. Skiris. Staff, Dennis, anything from you or staff?
Good evening, sir.
All right. Final item, adjourn to work session immediately following this meeting, motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby. Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Does anyone need a break or move right into work session? Okay, no breaks. All right. It's six thirty-six, Monday, February twenty-first. Work session, budget work session, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Michael Libby. Lauren Campbell.
Here.
And Teresa Harms.
Here.
How do we want to do this, Rochelle? You just want to summarize sort of what has been discussed or it looks like it's in your memo, but discuss since you gave your initial presentation.
Sure. I think I'll just start with this memo and just go through the highlights quick. In case somebody watches this later, looks like we don't have any, any other, I was trying to see if there was any other public on, but it doesn't look like it. So just some revenue highlights. total revenues are estimated at ten million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, an increase of ninety point nine three percent. Of four point nine six percent, which is about thirty-one thousand dollars. Local option sales tax, lost funds have to be dedicated fifty percent to tax levy reduction and fifty percent or tax, property tax relief and fifty percent other. So I just want to point that out that the things that we are including here, library, community center, liability insurance and debt service, really any of these, all of these are actually property tax relief, but it all does fall into the right categories.
Rochelle, can I ask, Rochelle, I'm sorry, could I just ask a quick question for clarification? So the, and I should have probably emailed you about this before, but of the total revenues, does that ten, ten million include lost?
Yes.
It does. Okay. All right. Thank you. I just needed to make sure that was included. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. The figures below that two million total include eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, two twenty-six unallocated from fiscal year twenty-two. And then five hundred eight thousand, five hundred eight thousand, three hundred of unallocated for fiscal year twenty-three. And Teresa, have you heard anything else? I didn't see that it went into funnel, right? So is the lost, are they, is it off the table?
Nope, it's very much, it's a Ways and Means bill. It's a tax bill, so they're alive for the entire session. Regardless of the funnel deadline. Yeah. Sorry to break your heart.
Yeah, yeah. I was like, I didn't see it. I was so happy, but, okay. But I did see, I did actually pull some figures. We had a, there was just a way we could pull what, what the impact could be to the city. And it's about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. If what happens, happens, that would be the impact to us. That was from the Iowa Department of Revenue and it was their analysis. So if something does happen, that's what our impact would be. The recommended levy reduction, recommending seventy-one cent reduction. The reduction comes completely to, from two levies, the FICA and IFRS levy and the other employee benefits levy. The revenue reduction is a hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. Use of the reserves from the Employee Benefits Fund can be sustained for eight to ten years. And the benefit to homeowner of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is about ninety-six dollars. Not a lot, but better than a ninety-six dollar increase. I'm in the budget departments, there's no major changes. There are minor additions included. I guess you guys can read through that. Unless somebody has some questions about those, those minor additions. And thus, there is some amendments on the back that have information about those. The Capital Improvement Plan. A draft CIP was included with the budget proposal. The Public Works Committee met and recommended the following projects, flood, seventy-third Street Phase One and Sixty-Eighth Street North Full Street Construction. So when I did this original budget, I prepared it in, with that in mind, that we would transfer all funds to capital, to street projects. Then when the Personnel and Finance Committee met on two-ten, they included reduction of the levy, they, they recommended that, but also inclusion of quality of life projects for fiscal year twenty-three. And then they also, they also asked for a presentation of a breakdown of the funding sources. So that's where figures A and B come in. And they are towards the back. Then also they asked that staff and Public Works prioritize additional projects for the remaining funding of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And Dalton went out to the, the Public Works Committee and they came back. And their option, their consensus was supporting allocating funds to begin the design of Seventy-third Street Phase Two. Our next steps, tonight, we set the property, maximum property tax public hearing on three-seven. And then on March seventh, we'll actually have the hearing for that. We'll adopt the resolution approving it. And then we'll set a public hearing for three-twenty-one to adopt the budget on March twenty-one. So then if you take a look at figure A, this, I just hope this helps. I just broke down the funding sources for capital projects. And you can see in the column, the first column, it tells you the, the dollar figure, the source, and then what you can be, it can be used for. Does anybody have any questions about this? Correct. So it looks like the combined total available is five million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for capital projects for actual streets and any other type of project.
Rochelle, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Sorry, up above, where the staff developed the following two options for the use of the four hundred and sixty available for capital projects and option B was what was the Public Works Committee suggested, right?
Oh, sure. Yes.
That four hundred and sixty, and then I see down below, there's the Seventy-third Street Project Fund can be used for Seventy-third Street Engineering. So is that three hundred and fifty in addition to the, the four sixty above?
Right. So that three hundred and fifty thousand, that should, that should actually say Seventy-third Street Phase One. I'm sorry, it should say Seventy-third Street Engineering Phase One.
Okay, gotcha.
That's just the first phase.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank. Projects list, our CIP, which I hope you guys have, it's in the binder, obviously on the very back page. I took the projects that the Public Works Committee asked for, which was the Sixty-Eighth Street Full Street Construction. We put that in there. And then everything after that, all the way to public safety parking lot replacement. Those are all projects that were slated for fiscal year twenty-two. But just hadn't been, or haven't been done yet. So I put them back onto the capital projects list. Then if you look down under public safety, we add the Plaza Hills Overlay Phase One and Two or Seventy-third Street Phase Two Design Work. So there's the two options. Then we have the splash pad, the fitness circuit, dog park equipment fence, and then the playground tennis court grant project. So all I did was take the CIP and all those projects that we looked at for fiscal year twenty-two and programmed them in. And there's your five point six million. So that brings the street projects to sixty-nine percent and quality of life projects to thirty percent. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Rochelle, can I ask a few questions here?
Absolutely.
As far as like the splash pad, what are the yearly operating costs associated with the splash pad?
I bet Dalton has this information. I think he's still on.
Yeah, it would, it would depend on if we go with the circulating or non-circulating pump system soon. So I, I don't have a dollar figure right now. I can, I can get that for you. It just really depends on what style you want.
And then will public works staff be on duty during the weekend to monitor the splash pad? Or if not, then whose job is it to check on the splash pad to make sure there are no issues?
Just a question for me.
Just a random question for anybody who cares to answer. I I don't really. I'll just continue with my questions. Do we have enough bathrooms? Is the outside bathroom conducive to changing into and out of the bathing suits for the kids and whatever? Will we need to add porta-pots because of the number of bathrooms that we have outside? Where would the splash pad be located? How much will our insurance increase yearly for the addition of the splash pad? Do we have the ability to do the repairs to the splash pad using public works staff? Or will we need to call in a company? And then do we have enough parking to accommodate the splash pad, dog park, community event center, bike path and playground users? I know that Urbendale decided to close down Lions Park Splash Pad and go into an agreement with Westaboin and Clive. So the residents could use that aquatic center for a lower cost. So I just would like to know kind of what the yearly expenses are because I, I can't really get behind spending four hundred thousand dollars knowing that our roads are in the condition that they're in. And I realize the quality of life, but you know, if we go looking into our, into our council goals and objectives, you know, plan and invest in city infrastructure, improve safety and availability of pedestrian facilities. You know, lighting enhancements along the walking trailway. I've asked for that for three years now to have lighting by two thirty-five. Because it's a safety concern underneath the bridge. But that hasn't ever made it anywhere.
And I think the splash pad or the water feature that was at Lions Park was the cement, just the like waiting pool. And that needed to be like completely redone. So I think that's why they closed that to, and it also was timed with the closing of Urbendale's indoor pool that they.
They also mentioned the cost of it just to, to keep it going. Like when I researched it, a lot of places were at fifty thousand dollars a year to, you know, have their splash pad running and that's with zero issues whatsoever. So those are my concerns with that, but Urbendale really didn't state other than it was fiscally more responsible to, to shut down everything and go in with Clive and Urbendale.
This is Teresa. I know that I had some conversations with some of the Johnston Council members and they've just done one and I think they're doing maybe a second one. So Dalton, that might be a place to maybe have a conversation. Just to kind of see if we can, you know, get some additional information. But I know they've been, it's been incredibly popular and offer, and I know they're multi, they're doing different activities, I think in the winter, it converts to like ice skating and those sorts of things. So but anyways, that might be just a place. And I think one of the other things that I've learned about it is just that they're a lot different than they used to. I'm not going to say there are, there, you know, aren't any associated costs, but certainly those are excellent questions, Susan, that we need to probably have, you know, more information. So we can, we can get that and make a decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Dennis.
I think, Susan, I echo that, what Teresa just said. Those are excellent questions, but I'd like to lay out how we are like kind of looking at this. This is similar. This is similar to a, let's say a project that's the community center. So there's a lot of information that's available to us on splash pads. There's a lot of information that's not available to us. And won't be available to us until we have. Uh, landed on what kind of splash pad is Dalton alluded to earlier. So. You know, a lot of this is going to flesh out when we have a design. We're also going to want to do public input to see if we can have a multi-use for a facility like this. Uh, and then we're also going to have to program, program this, whatever this operational cost will be, and there will be operational costs. Just like the trailway that we built on University Avenue. Now we have to assume. The cleanup, the snow removal for that new facility. We're going to have to do the same thing with a splash pad, probably at times 10. So those are all really good points to make. We definitely are going to have to absorb this as an operational expense. And I would just say at this point, without knowing most of the details. Uh, the best, you know, example is probably building a new community center and having to deal with those same exact issues.
The, the point I, I'd say the point of this work session is um. You know, public works made some recommendations in December. And it was basically everything roads and everything else was kind of shelved. Budget committee gets together and they recommend uh, keeping the, the roads that were pri- prioritized, but also. Um, adding back on the overlays. And the quality of life projects. Counsel has to come to a consensus about whether or not they want to uh, pursue those things. And whether or not they believe it's worthy to budget those things. So this is the point of the, this meeting tonight is to build that consensus. We're going to budget a lot of money for a lot of things, but at the end of the day. We still have to approve those things when they come before the council. So you know, we're going to budget that money. For a splash pad, which is apparently the very hot topic. Um, I've already got, I got an email during this meeting about it. And I would assume that if we get some sort of information that. You know, it's going to be this ridiculous ongoing cost. And if it floods, it has to be completely replaced. Council may decide not to do it. Uh, but tonight I think. You should determine what you feel is important so that when we uh, show up to vote on the budget. Um, you know, there's not going to be any. Wanting to take things back or. We, we should have the discussion tonight about what we feel is important. So. That's what I'm asking you, you all to do.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I, I, I'm just looking at, at the numbers here and I think a 70 30 split. With regard to um, infrastructure. And quality of life is certainly fair and reasonable. And uh, again, to echo what we talked about just last month. Yes, it's important that we have a solid streets, but it's also important. As new people move to our community. And I've had that opportunity to meet with several new people. Who have moved to Windsor Heights, choosing Windsor Heights because they see this as a, as a place that. As, has a real interest in quality of life. And then so I think that, that 70 30 split is, is totally reasonable. Thank you.
Joseph Jones, Ms. Harms. Uh, you were on obviously budget finance. Do you have any comments about this?
Yeah, I think um, well, not think, I know the, the reason that in this discussion that I walked away from. This list and being happy with it was that um, it's exactly what I had discussed in our last conversation, which was, I believe that. We can do both things. Um, I, I don't want us to be in a position where all we do is road construction. Um, granted, we've done a lot. We've done a lot more in the last few years and put projects in motion than many other iterations of council before us. Um, and I understand that these roads are, um, the street projects are very important and that they are priorities. Uh, for many people in the committee, but. You know, these things have been priorities for some of them decades and they hadn't actually been done. So we've actually gotten the ball moving on a lot of things. Um, and I think that there is something to be said about creating quality of life projects as well. And I'm not going to. Say that I don't think that those are, are good ideas and we should put all the rags in one basket. So um, I am. In total favor of what the split has turned out to be. Um, I think that some of the projects that we're going to want to do are not always going to be, you know, unanimous decision and I'm okay with that. But this. Um, resulting list of projects uh, from the public works committee plus our input from our committee. Um, I think is a, a really good example of how we can both do. The things that are needed for safety and infrastructure along with doing the things that make our community special and make people want to come and visit. And hang out and may. And go to our point though, I do think that we need to um, somehow discuss the lighting thing. I think that must have gotten lost. I, I thought we all had agreed at some point, but that was something that we needed to. Do like yesterday. So maybe um, the, the team on the city staff can tell us. There's a stats for that or why we've not been able to do that. Um, because I think that that is something that should be done. Like I said yesterday, um, for that. Underpass on 10235 on the trail. So. That's the, that's what I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Joseph. Um. Real quick. Is Aaron still here? Or Darren Lee?
I believe she's gone.
Oh, okay. Well, um, I, I think we can, or I think you can give um. Dennis, if you don't think it's inappropriate to um, look into the lighting issue. Um, potentially have Dalton or someone find out what, how that could be added. Either this time around or the next time around for the CIP. If, if uh, council feels that's appropriate. It sounds like they do.
Hey.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Dennis.
Mr. Mayor, if there's uh, there's actually two things I was gonna, I was gonna ask us to circle back on, and that is. Um, while the public works committee's consensus was the design work on 73rd street phase two, I have not yet heard this evening that that would be the. The council's choice for that $460,000. So. I don't know how you want to do that. If there's, ask if there's an objection to the design work or if there's a better option.
Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Libby.
Thank you. Um, I, I would speak in favor of the 73rd. Uh, street project is simply from the standpoint that will be uh, I think time ahead. And as funds come available from uh, the president's. Infrastructure program. I think that if we get as much done on the forward part of this. That we can, we'll be able to move at a much more rapid rate. And avoid uh, costly increases due to any inflationary pressures. So. I would be in favor of option B uh, that Dalton has put forward. Thank you, sir.
All right.
I have a quick question. Uh, so I get, this is probably a question for Justin and Dalton. Um, I, I apologize. I haven't. I'm not familiar with uh, the Plaza Hills overlay phase one and two uh, with the conditions of the streets that that encompasses. Um, is that as dire as like the 68th street north situation or? Um, is there any risk, I guess, that you see in doing the 73rd street phase two over the Plaza Hills?
So the Plaza Hills overlay phases one and two, uh, recommend an overlay because the pavement isn't. I mean, it's not gone yet. So there is still a decent base that we can put asphalt on top of. Um, 68th street. Let me know if I'm not hitting your, hitting the mark here, but 68th street's gone far enough where it doesn't really warrant. Like remediation or patching work. It's, it's pretty well toast.
That, that, that really helps. So maybe a better question for me to ask is, is um, if Plaza Hills overlay phase one and two is next year. Are we going to still be in that overlay uh? Uh, to solve the problem or will it be in the full street construction? Like, are we that, are we that close to where this is going to be a much more expensive project a year from now?
Uh, no, I mean, the, the roads, with the exception of college before it got redone, the roads up in that area. They, they, I mean, I've only been here for four years, but they appear to be wearing decently well with maybe the exception being Maryland. Um, but they do, and I think that our three council members that live up in that area can probably attest to the poor condition of Maryland. I don't. I don't know if that would necessarily be a good overlay street, but. Um, I think if you waited a year, you would be okay, but.
That helps. Thank you, Dalton. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So I'll just um, chime in um, on a couple of things. Um. Susan, you're exactly right about the lights and I, you know, it's like, where did they, they didn't get it put on a list, right? And so then they're not there and then we don't think about them. Um, and so I'm glad we'll, we're going to get some more information um, on that to move forward. Um. You know, I would echo a lot of the same things that, that Joseph said, and I think. When, you know, we met with Rochelle to go over the budget and. Look and, you know, figure out what were the total dollars that we had available? What were the things that were first recommended? And how could we move forward? We were pleasantly surprised that there was, you know, there were dollars available um, to be able to, to do some things, whether that be from. You know, last year, um, things that didn't get allocated or whatever. I think we're in a unique and interesting. Position and as a lot of communities and, and counties are at this juncture. With some dollars to do some infrastructure projects and dollars that we may not even be aware of that might be available. Um, today that everybody's going to be getting these dollars and buying for, you know, the, the workforce to be able to support these projects. And there's only so much of that available to be able to do them. So. I'm, you know, I think one of the potential issues that we have as well is do we, even if we poured all of. You know, a hundred percent of this money into street construction. Is um, or infrastructure from that perspective, are we going to even be able to spend those dollars? And um, I know one of the things we learned by doing. The big university along with college and, and 69th all at the same time. Um, that we found ourselves in a bit of a pickle where projects weren't getting done on time. Things were delayed. There are street, or you know, the city was torn up. There, you know, um, but I, you know, it was good because we made great progress. Um, at the, I, I also think that um, you know. Into this, the next couple of summers, we're going to be competing with lots of others and we have a workforce issue in the state. And so. I think it's an opportunity for us right now to look at um, doing some other types of projects that maybe aren't um, street construction. Um, and be able to balance that um, a little bit too. Not only because, you know, I on, you know. Wholeheartedly believe in, in the quality of life projects. Um, and well, we have some big decisions to make when we come to that. Um, but at the end of the day, how can we not only have some balance, but how do we reflect on that too? Financially from the perspective of workforce, because we could say we're going to put all the money into. Streets and then not be able to have the workforce to be able to support um, or be able to get anybody to bid. Um, for those or the cost of those go up considerably because of. Um, uh, the competitive bidding that will be going or the lack of competitive bidding that will be going on because there are so many projects. Um, just because of how things are, are transitioning right now. Um, so I just throw those things out there for consideration. Um. Um, and you know, I'm, I'm good with the public works is recommendation with 73rd street as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Just, yeah, so just taking up the issue of 73rd. Um. Um. Joseph or Susan, any specific input on that?
I'm fine with 73rd. With the option B.
I'm fine with option B.
All right. Dennis, I think that answers your question on that one.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the staff's going to put together a project to insert on this list for adding the trail lighting. Uh, and we'll, we're, I think we can accomplish it with the current dollars that you see here, but we'll put that together and have the council bless this one more time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe we have, we have park funds scheduled for miscellaneous park projects in the last couple of fiscal years. That the council directed us to not spend uh, while we waited the results of the flood study. So we could probably do the, the park or the lighting project right now, just knowing that whatever we put in is probably going to get removed as part of the. Channel modification program. Which is obviously going to be years and years away. So it's not the worst thing in the world. Just. We can make that happen here prior before the end of fiscal year.
Well, I don't want to get too much into the, the weeds of it, but I don't. I don't know the difference between, are you putting lights on the ground or can you hang, put them on the overpass? Like what is the, you know, what's the difference? If, if there's a possibility.
The pricing that I got from Baker was to do, um, it was a pretty huge solar panel and then mount lights to the bottom of the um, cross members on the bridge. Um, and then there'd be a battery that the solar panel charged. My recommendation would be to not do that would be to hardwire them into the lighting system that we have in the park. I already got permission from the DOT. I got their, their bridge specs and everything. So I mean, I could. I mean, it's not unreasonable to say, I have a project back to you guys at the next council meeting, if that's what you want.
I think that's.
We will have that project put together for the council so that we can choose to move forward or not.
Okay. Was that both of your, your, your issues, Dennis?
Yeah, those were the two issues that, that I had on my notes.
All right, Susan, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Oh, no, no problem. Rochelle, can I ask? Um, probably more than one question, but at least one question right now. Um, so I'm looking at um, our binder, page 18, the departmental expenditures. Uh, culture and recreation, special events, um, fiscal year 23. So we are budgeting $22,500. And then somewhere, oh, on the uh, attachment on five. Um, funding of $12,500 to support special event offerings. So are we adding that together to make like $35,000? Or we're just at 12,500 and we're not doing the 22,500?
Um, there's a total of 22,500 for special events. 10,000 of that is um, was set normally set aside for fireworks. So there's your 12,000.
So that's where we're at, at 12,500.
Mm-hmm. So you have 22, 22.5 if you do fireworks. And meaning the special events committee could utilize that, that money for fireworks as well. So we, we have to use some of it for fireworks whenever you do the fireworks.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have enough money because from my understanding, granted, we might be moving to the fall, but if we end up. July 3rd or 4th, that our fireworks are going to kind of jump up in price. So that's going to cut into the special events. Uh, projects that we are looking at funding. So that's my concern.
Sure. Um, we can probably. We can up that if you, if we need to make that dollar figure higher, that is completely up to you guys. I can do it right now.
I don't know. Go ahead.
Rochelle, just so we're clear, there's the 22.5. And you said 12 of that is dedicated that has to be spent on fireworks. No ifs, ands or buts?
No, no. 10 of it, 10,000 was set aside in. Every year since I've been here, we've set aside 10,000 for fireworks. And then the other 12,500 was for other events. So.
Okay.
However, you want to.
Yeah, so grand total, the, the 22.5 is to be spent on special events.
Yes.
Okay. It's just that.
If we need to make it more, we can make it more.
Okay. Well.
And what we could do, if it comes to it, we get halfway through the year and we see that we need more money in there. We'll, I'll always be doing a budget amendment. We can always add funds at that time as well, or we can do it now, which is perfect timing.
I just wanted to make. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly because when I read it. I read it one way, one time, another way, another time, and then I confused myself. And so I wanted to make sure that. I knew we have $12,500, give or take in the special events. Fund that, you know, we can use for Windsor Wonderland that we're creating, the Fall Festival. that, you know, we can use for Windsor Wonderland that we're creating, the Fall Festival or July third or fourth or, and movies in the park. So that was, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. What do you guys think? Do you want me to bump it? Now is the time to do it, if you want me to bump it.
I guess I'm not too sure how much money the Fall Festival and honestly, the Windsor Wonderland is gonna take. So that is my only concern. You know, we tried to fundraise for it and I think we used a thousand dollars for movies in the park about that. I mean, give or take some. So we did do a lot of fundraising. I just wanna make sure that we, you know, make, do, we just don't half do a job. You know, we, we actually get everything looking nice for the Fall Festival or Windsor Wonderland or whatever we decide.
Well, why don't, does anyone disagree with me bumping it to maybe forty, thirty-five thousand, forty thousand? The money's available in the general fund, so it's not like we're taking from another pot that's gonna, it's, it's available. And if you guys are okay with it, I can change it.
I am okay with that, Rochelle.
So would that be bumping it up by five thousand to make it up to forty? Is that kind of?
I think we should bump it to forty, to forty thousand dollars.
So that's like eighteen thousand, seventeen thousand five hundred extra?
And you don't have to spend it, remember? It'll just be there in case you need it.
No problem.
Does anybody, anybody have an objections to, to that?
Nope. I defer to the special events committee, folks.
We, I, I, I'm of course in, in favor of it. We still are prioritizing fundraising to minimize the hit to the city's wallet, but knowing that we have that cushion to, to give it our best, I think, is, is is, is really nice for residents.
Excellent. Easy to do. So I will make the change. And then I will update. So that will change these forms and it'll change the forms in the back, obviously. But I'll get you guys all those new updated forms before we do a final approval.
I believe everybody has provided input. Is there any other discussion, concerns?
So Mike, what I'll do is I'm actually update the CIP and we'll insert the twenty-twenty, those projects that we've looked at, this capital projects list. I'll just update the CIP and then when we approve the budget, then we can approve the CIP at the same time.
Mayor.
Mr. Libby.
Thank you. Just to, to raise another issue, I'm meeting next month early with the Keep Windsor Heights Beautiful group. And just to, just to see whether or not there would be any interest in doing some joint work with regard to flowers on University Avenue. And so I, I just wanna check, feel that area out, see how those folks feel about doing that and, and we'll just see.
Are you talking about hanging or like there at the town center?
Um, both, maybe?
Okay. That's budgeted for a event, Rochelle?
Uh, yes, there's some things budgeted. Dalton, I'm not sure exactly what's in the parks budget for that. I don't have a lot.
I think we're talking two different issues here, to be honest with you. So staff's been working with the Keep Windsor Heights Beautiful group to identify hanging baskets, lights, and there was a third thing that were banners. We've been working with them on the banners. I think Mr. Libby's talking about developing some volunteer assistance to the Keep Windsor Heights Beautiful, so that when we do invest tax dollars in these items, that they don't just fail after a couple of years. Is that right, Mike?
That's correct, Dennis. Yeah. And, and I've reached out to several groups who are really interested in doing this. And I understand that sometimes, you know, the fervor of the moment can be exciting. But my goal is, is to get some other people to help augment our friends at Windsor Heights, Keep Windsor Heights Beautiful, because I know that they sometimes struggle with volunteer help. So yeah, it's, it's a whole manner of different things. And as we had talked, I think maybe Dalton and I had talked, you know, we don't feel comfortable in picking out what kind of flowers go where. But these folks that are part of this botanical group know what's, what works and what may not. So it's just a sidebar kind of a thing. I just wanted the council to know that, that's going on.
Mike, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. I, I had a request come in or a question come in from a resident who asked about opportunity for a community garden. And I didn't know if maybe the current Lions Park might be something that could be home to some raised beds that people could plant and, and manage. And if that, if anyone else is interested in that becoming a, a city type project versus, you know, a, a community group establishing. So I know that there's been some interest in future plans at Lions Park and developing or redeveloping that. But in the interim, would raised gardens, garden beds be an option? And I believe we had, I don't know, second, third, fourth grader from maybe more.
That's right, yeah.
She asked about the seventy, or Sixty-third and Hickman area. And then when we were kind of talking with council, we did bring up Lions Park. I think maybe Mayor Jones brought that up, that maybe we could use that area and kind of have her involved in that, since this was kind of some of her idea. But we had talked about that last, last year at some point in time. I just don't think that we really acted on it at all since then.
I also had a meeting with the Botanical Gardens, the new executive director down at the Botanical Gardens. I think I shared that previously and there, they would be interested in any, you know, in collaborations to, you know, create an environment or whatever the case may be to, like a Lions Park type of location. So, you know, I think that we probably have lots of opportunities. I think somebody needs to probably head it up and, and collaborate with, you know, the Keep Windsor Heights Beautiful group to, to do that.
Is the discussion right now, hold on, Mr. Libby, is the discussion right now then, is council wanting there to be something on the CIP about, you know, what it would cost to, what the budgeting would be for a community garden or, or something else? No?
I, I, I would say a community garden would be the, the request would be for budgeting or to what the estimate would be to, so that it could be budgeted potentially for a community garden.
Does anybody else support Lauren's idea?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Libby.
Couple, thank you. A couple of years ago, in one of the election cycles, I can't remember which one, I was a door knocking in Windsor Heights. And I ran across, and I'm gonna go back, I just need, this is just council information. There was a couple who live in a house that I think it backs up to Montessori, the Montessori school somewhere that, but they have a lot there next to their home that is not large enough to do anything with as far as building a structure. However, they did indicate that they would love to be able to donate that piece of property to the city for, at that time, we were talking about a, a bench and a reading library and everything. But this could be very well, could be a, a, a place for a community garden as well. So let me see if I can research that and bring up the gray matter as far as where that house was and who the individuals were. So that may be another possibility.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanna take a second to point out before we start designing a new park, that we do have a recently adopted parks plan that did speak specifically to Lions Park. And maybe it's a good time to go back and review the outcome of that very comprehensive citizen input process and see what they have come up with for Lions Park. And then convene the council in a work session to talk that over. And that would give staff time enough to also put together some additional information such as costing and anything that would be relevant towards any of these discussion topics this evening, if that's acceptable.
Thank you, Dennis.
Lauren, I believe it was your idea. Does that sound acceptable to you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any further discussion? Sorry, go ahead, Rochelle.
I'm sorry, Mike. The one good thing is about this budget is even if you wanted to direct some funds towards that and away from something else, it doesn't have to be specified in the budget. It would need to be specified on your CIP, but your budget can still be what it is. And you can just use the funds that are specified for something, for something else, or there, there, we could have extra funds. Or so the cost for something like this isn't gonna be exorbitant. So I think the funding is probably within the budget that we currently have, unless you're talking a couple hundred thousand or something. But that's the beauty of the way the budgeting works. It doesn't have to be specific from a capital project standpoint.
All right. Any further discussion, council? Dennis, anything further from you that you need from us?
Well, thank you. Good work session. Thank you.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
And they, and Lauren Campbell. All right, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.